Okay, so the temperatures go in the opposite direction. I tell you, but it's okay. We had mild winter, that's. I know it. I know it. Gets us all.
Hey, it's 1:03. We'll get this party started.
All right.
Ready, begin.
All right. Well, I hope don't, I don't want to take a whole lot of your time, but I wanted to have the opportunity to make sure that everybody's on the same page and answer any questions that anyone might have about this $500,000 grant that we got. And I think Diane may have been here the other night. I don't know, but thank you too. I'd like to extend that thank you as well.
Thank you again. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Well, you obviously didn't get the note, the memo, because you were supposed to bring drinks for this reason.
I would have a bottle of rum. I'd have brought you any drink you want.
I think she has.
No, we better not go down there.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you know, we can have some punch. All right, so what this is, is just basically a timeline of the tasks that have to be completed. And I tried to highlight the things that the county would be involved with. But I just want to make sure, we'll just go through it quickly and if you have any questions, ask. So the grant was awarded and a letter of award was emailed to Mark and CC to myself and I think Diane. They in turn then also, Mark, have emailed you the grant agreement. I don't know if you've seen that, but they normally don't do that until after we get all the required information in. But they're Johnny on the spot this round. They, they went ahead and they got that out, so.
Well, Sue Ellen's running for reelection. Running for governor.
I saw that. I saw that. So anyway, grant, grant award letter has been completed. Now what I have to do is, we said a lot of things in the grant application. They, they use this acronym called PEEPS. And it's a financial, so it stands for the Financial Environmental Engineering Permits and Site Control. So I have to submit a financial update, which that's staying the same. The YMCA is supplying the local match in the amount of $500,000. The environmental review, we did an environmental review on the project. So now I have to upload all of the letters that we got back on that. Engineering status, they had an engineer architect do the preliminary plans for them. But they were going to just hire a design build contractor to do the design. But under the grant, I can't have the contractor design the project. So we have to have an architect, a licensed architect involved. And so the Y, even though they're utilizing their local funds to pay for that, they think that it's in their best interest, as do I, to solicit support architects. So we're in the process of doing that right now. We've had, I don't know, I had probably about four of them contact me. And they are going to have their statement of qualifications in in the upcoming weeks. The Y board will get together, shortlist them and then select a couple to interview and then figure out who they're going to enter into an agreement to do the design and then oversee the construction process as well. Permit, I think that this is only going to require a city building permit. We're not tearing up any, any dirt or anything. We're doing stuff in existing. So that would be a question that remember when we get the architect would be able to answer 100%. But at this point in time, that's what we said in the application and that stays the same. And site control, there's no site control. They own the property. They own the building. So we're good there. I do have some civil rights posters, required posters. And Janet, I'm sure you have a lot of these already somewhere in the building. But there's some ones that have been updated. So after this meeting, I was hoping maybe I can follow you. We can pin them up somewhere. I can snap a picture and show, hey, we got it. All right, the meeting today. All right, so the next thing is the execution of the grant agreement. So after we have time to talk, I'm hoping that at the end of this meeting that you guys will authorize Mark to digitally sign that and get that back to the state. The grant agreement is the agreement between the County of Decatur and the State of Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs. And it basically says, county, we're going to give you $500,000. Here's your grant number, your identifications. Here's milestones that we would like to see you accomplish. We'd like to have your environmental release within two months, a grant award. Your bidding of the project within six months. And then you need to be completed within a year. Now, in the event that we run into any difficulties meeting those milestones, all I have to do is file for a modification request to extend that. Now, would we require Mark's signature? So if we get into that situation, I'll put the, I'll draft a letter, get it to Mark, CC everybody on it so that you see it, and he can sign it and then I can get it into the state. But I really don't anticipate that we will have any issues with meeting the milestones because this is kind of a straightforward prep. We're not building a building from scratch. So I really do think is if we can get an architect on board, we will easily be able to bid this project within six months. I think the Y is wanting to get it bid in June. I mean, get, get it bid in June and get construction. The construction time period, another plus for you guys. Unlike a, a big project that we're building from scratch, this should be, I mean, once this ripping contractor gets on site, I really don't anticipate this taking much more than six to eight weeks. I think it's going to be pretty quick because I think they'll move in and they'll groove it out and get on out of here. So the nice thing from Janet's perspective is that we would be ordering all the funds and extending all the funds in 2024. So you're not going to have to carry anything over into next year's books, which we all like that. You know, we don't need any carryover. But anyway, that is, I mean, basically the grant agreement just says, we're going to give you 500. You're going to meet these deadlines. If you can't, file for an extension. And if you, and then this $500,000, you're going to spend it on this Y project. You can't spend it on something else. And in the end, we're going to come and we're going to do an audit. So this is a double audit type of a project. So the state grant agency will audit the project at the end of, once we're completed. And then all of that will be tied in a box, tied in a bow. And then it'll be available when state board of accounts comes. I give you hard copies of everything. I will give you digital copies of some things. I keep digital copies of everything. I have had my auditors and clerks contact me two years after the project's been closed. The state board's here. Can you help? Easy peasy. I got it all and I can answer anything that they might need. So that's, that's pretty much what the grant agreement is. It's a boilerplate type of a document. I don't know, Chad, have you had an opportunity to kind of review it? It doesn't look any different than what I've seen over the past 30 some years. The dollar amount was right and that was that.
Yeah, I've looked at it and there's nothing terribly concerning in it as to us, to the state. And there's no bargaining power between us and the state. You're taking the money, you're going to sign their agreement. And just so long as you guys and the Y understand that everything the state is putting on us, we are going to win the sub-recipient.
And that's what the sub-recipient agreement is.
So, so we are essentially going to pass through all of our obligations through our agreements and it's going to fall on you guys. We're just kind of the holder at this point, so.
Yeah, you're the pass through, but you're exactly right that, you know, if they fail to do what they're supposed to do, then it does fall back on you. That's why we put together this sub-recipient agreement, which is the agreement between the county and the Y that says, you're going to use the money for the roof and you're going to do these things. We're, and we're going to expect this and blah, blah, blah. So that's what we kind of need to kind of maybe cash out a little bit today. And then I'll change it up and get it to Chad. He can add. And we'll go back and forth and draft this out. And, and, you know, we're not going to bid anything until that is absolutely signed and, and agreed on by both parties. So that's, that, that's what the sub-recipient agreement is. Now, I also did put together a draft sub-recipient agreement. I don't know if you all have had any time to look at those bullet points and see if there was anything. Yeah, that was the one that I highlighted, the, the areas in blue. I think I've got, I've got extra copies if anyone needs.
Yeah.
Okay. That's okay. That's okay. There you go. Do you need a copy? You're good? Yeah, I think you're good. And Mark, speak back to that.
Yeah, I haven't looked at it, but I accidentally walked out this morning.
You got one? Okay. And there you go. So really what's highlighted, this is the, the, the front part of that sub-recipient agreement is boilerplate two. It's been put together by the state's attorney and so there's not a lot of latitude on that. I mean, we could suggest something if you feel necessary, Chad. But mainly the appendix one of that sub-recipient is the meat and potatoes, the real thing that we're trying to iron out. I highlighted the, in yellow, that's just the description. That's what we're doing. That's not really subject to change too much. We have to put down the property address and parcel, so that's in there. We had to put down the service area in which it would cover, so that's under bullet point C. Then we had to put a schedule together in D, that's on the second page. Kind of what we're looking at is the environmental release by April. And then we want to open the bids in, by July, maybe not sooner, but start construction in August, be done by the end of the year and then close everything out. Even though all the money will be spent, Janet, by the end of this year. Closeout comes in, in January because I have to wait till all the checks clear and then I submit. But it'll all be from a state board of account standpoint on your 2024 books, unless something just goes totally awry and we have to end up, you know, rebidding or something of that nature. But that's what we're looking at right now. The blue, when I print on the computer screen, it was a lot lighter than this. So I apologize when it printed out. It's a little difficult to think. This is where we have all kinds of latitude to change, edit, whatever that you might want. So let, we can just kind of go through and we can add, subtract, whatever you think is maybe necessary. So the first bullet was the Decatur County Family YMCA is a non-for-profit entity with, in Decatur County that's charged with the responsibility of operating and maintaining the YMCA. The county of Decatur will act as the grant recipient, whereas the Decatur County Family YMCA will be considered the grant sub-recipient. The county of Decatur will contribute $0 as local match for the project. The Decatur County YMCA will contribute at a minimum $500,000 in local match for the completion of this much needed project. Those funds are cash on hand through a capital campaign and through the community foundation. And said funds will be transferred to a project fund established specifically for the completion of this project upon the Oprah Grant Award.
Okay.
So that's, yes, that's, there's.
Your match money, does it have to go through Janet?
No.
So when the bills are paid, how, how?
That's the question that, that it can go a couple of different ways. So there's, this is a gray area. Not typically what my sub- recipients and my counties do. The county really wants to keep their administrative role in this to a minimum. So normally what we do is we have, the county will establish, if you don't already have it, you may already have like a grant pass-through fund. If you don't, you can just establish a new fund that says YMCA grant. When the contractor builds and gives the, the Y an invoice, the Y board will meet and they will approve that invoice. Then I will send an invoice from the Y to the county with the attached invoice from the contractor requesting, let's say that they bill was $200,000. So I'm going to request, I'll say, so the YMCA will bill the county $200,000. And then there will be, and then once you get that approved, then I put together a drawdown. So I'll put that together. I'll send it to you. You'll sign it. And then I'll send it to the state about 10 to 15 days thereafter. The state will electronically transfer the funds to the county. You'll take those funds and transfer it to your pass-through fund, Y fund. And then you'll write out a check for $200,000 to the Y. The Y then will then deposit that $200,000 and they will pay the contractor direct. That's typically how my counties prefer it. But in some instances, they want to pay the bills direct to the vendor.
That would be my preference.
Okay.
It's been done in the past with other projects that we've gone through Oprah with.
Where we work at like, like the claims and then we go on to pay the claim and.
It's, it's again, you would send the invoice to Oprah so that we get a drawdown. They notify us that the money's coming out because any Oprah funds we've ever gotten always come from the other state.
They do. Yes, that's correct.
So I don't like turning it around and writing a check to the Y because we have no control over that. Not accusing anybody of anything, but we write it to the.
Do you just pay the contractor? Like we send you a bill for 200 and it was the.
And once.
Contractor A B C, then you're going to pay.
We write A B C a check. And now we give the Casa house out here.
All right. Well, that is not a problem.
How do we, how do we handle the portion of the Y?
That's, that's why I asked.
Well.
Right. So that gets deposited. We pay those out.
So basically what I do is I run two sets of books and then we'll merge them in the end. So the Y will pay all the bills direct.
That's, that's.
Two sets of books.
Well, you're going to have.
Because I can't prove that you're asking matching. So if this comes in at $900,000.
So do you want to write all the checks out for every vendor? So you would like for the Y to give you money. You set up a fund. You set up a YMCA fund. The, once we get, once we get the project, everybody under contract, the Y then will just give you their local match and you'll deposit it into your fund. And then when I need to pay bills, I'll put those all together. Say, Janet, here's the bills we need to pay this month. You'll get them approved and then we'll order the money. The money will come in and then you'll write out all the checks.
And we've done in the past. That way, if $200,000 comes in, we pay that out with Oprah. And then another $200,000 comes in, we pay it out with the Y's money. So that to me, it needs to be an even payout.
Yeah, it has to be prorated, Dan. So each invoice that I get, so some invoices are 100% being paid with local funds, such as my services, the architect, those would be all Y funds because we didn't go through procurement on my services. And I didn't know at the time of the grant application if we were going to actually go through formal procurement because we didn't know. because we didn't know who we were going to get, I'll be quite honest. So I normally set all the professional fees so that they have latitude to hire whoever they want under the logo column. The only thing that will be publicly bid would be the, the contractor that does the roof. Now, that brings up another thing though. If you guys are going to pay all of the bills, then you would want the contracts between the county and you. And then that assumes, I mean, the bottom line is, is that if you're going to assume all that liability, then why have a sub recipient?
That's my, that's my concern, I think.
I mean, if you're, that's why my sub recipients, all of them in the past, have just, when we need money, we order, we send the invoice to them. And then in turn, they are the, they're the ones that have the contracts. They're the ones that pay the bills.
That was kind of my concern too, because then if the bidding is going to be done, technically we'd be the ones asking for the bid, I think, if we're going to do it that way. Not the Y. We would actually be the ones that would be doing the formal bidding process.
You would. And it's going to create a lot more work on your end if you did it that way. I, I don't care. It's, it's totally you, but I'm just trying to print out pros and cons of both.
As the sub recipient agreement where the Y pays all of the bills and requests the Oprah funding for the matches to bid, it becomes the Y's true project.
It does.
And when they request funds, we just give it to them and then they're responsible.
And it kind of is the Y's true project because they own the facility. It's not a county owned facility.
Right. But they're not the ones that get all the, to get written up for any, you know, and for something that's not done right.
Janet?
I don't know. I'm processing because.
And that's fine.
At the end of the day, I mean, I think you can distinguish between, we're not accepting any liability or any connection to the project, but we're, I mean, we're the money holder and they're the third party beneficiary of the agreement. I don't know that that places any liability on us. And I'm definitely going to rewrite some of this stuff to make sure it's very clear that we're not taking liability from anybody on anything or anything that happens top to bottom. You know, we'll be an additional insured across the board. And I believe the state contract said we have to be the name to pay the E on all insurance under this project. So all those things need to be written up. But, you know, at the end of the day, regardless of where we handle the money, we're not assuming liability for any of this. Um, I guess one of the things that, and I haven't figured this out yet, is because it's state Oprah money, I assume we have to follow normal state bidding procedures.
Actually, federal funds that come through the state agency. But yes, we will. The bidding will consist of, we'll advertise it twice, seven days apart, at least 14 days prior to bid. It'll probably be more like 30. We'll have to have a pre-bid meeting.
So the bidding process.
We have to have, yeah, they have to do the Form 96, a 5% bid bond. The whole. Davis Bacon doesn't apply. Davis Bacon applies.
So you'll have to have a wage, wage meeting to determine.
No, we don't. Uh, if it's a, if it's a state funded job, you have a wage meeting because then the state department will determine those, those rates. A Davis Bacon, those are determined automatically in Washington. And every Thursday night they renew. And on Friday morning, I have a new scale. I have to use the scale that is in effect 48 hours prior to the bid. So it'll go out via addendum to all plan holders. But we don't have to have a meeting to set that. U.S. Department of Labor sets that. It's a little different than a state funded job.
Okay. So also on the funding or the, that paying the invoices, who, uh, you calculate the retainage because of.
Absolutely. You get 5% throughout or, or we, we do 10% throughout. A 10% to 50% completion or 5% throughout. I prefer to do 5% throughout because it's hard to figure out where that 50% mark is. But we will keep, we do keep our retainage. Typically, we do not start a retainage account. What we do is we just leave it with the state. And then when everything's signed, the Y's happy, you're happy. Then we will order the final funds to pay the retainage. But yes, if they submit a bill for $100,000, $5,000 is going to be deducted and it will just stay at the state and we won't order that till the table.
Okay. So what happens if the project is over? Funding?
That's the Y's.
That would be the Y's responsibility to come, to come up with additional. That's where I said at a minimum, the 500, because they have to, you know, we said in order to get the grant that we were going to bring 500 to the table. Now, if it comes in and if we get good bids and it comes in at 490, they're not going to say, you've got to come up. But if it came in, we got great bids and it came in like, say, at 800, well, then what they're going to do is say, well, because your local match is going down, we're going to take a little of our grant down too, so it'll be prorated. Which I'll figure that all out. Once the bids come in, I'll be able to say, okay, we've got enough money or why you need to come up with more. We're going to end up giving a little grant back again. Well, we don't get it back. We just don't order it.
Okay. So does your payment come out of the Y's match or the?
For my service, that comes out of the Y's match, yes. And those services I'm doing, um, because I know you guys have historically worked with southeastern regional planning. And that's actually where I started many moons ago, right out of college. But, um, I've been doing it for 32 years, 33, I think. Went out on my own years ago. And the bottom line is that they in turn could do it, but they're going to charge you more. I, because I'm trying to be a little community here, I discounted it like to a third what my fees normally are. Because yeah, I, I just felt like it was a good project. I like the Y and I'm trying to do some, now that I'm off the Y, I'm off of the school board and the redevelopment commission now. So now I'm kind of just helping out community, doing community things.
And we are, we did some pre-bidding prior to all of this coming to fruition. And one of my bids was over a million dollars. And we had the projections of the financial, of what we need to do for that. If it does, we got plans in place up to 1.2D. And we got, we got it if it's happened back, but we are. We've got plans in place up to that.
We just needed that 500,000 to help out. But yes, so my fees and the architect's fee, so we should have about, we'll have three vendors on this project. We'll have the grant admin, we'll have the architect, and we'll have the contractor. The grant admin and the architect will be paid with the local funds. And the ar, the, the contractor will be paid a combination of local and, um, the federal funds.
How quickly do you see local funds being deposited in this account? We keep everything here.
I don't know. It has to do with her cash flow when she can have a half million in cash available.
Do you have interest on it until it's used?
Well, that's right, because it's set in there. And that's the thing too, that that, it's in an investment account. So basically, when we need to pay bills, she's only going to order so much off of that. And we would order so much from the state to pay the bills.
But if you want us to pay 50/50 of everything that comes in, like if it, that's if it's a hundred, you know, essentially $200,000 of dollar invoice.
That's why I was asking, to make sure that like the funding is available so that when we do start to see these bills come in, that it's available to be deposited into, you know, this Y fund. So that we don't have to worry about it, so that we can do 50/50 or something like that.
So same process, they do the claim or whatever, it comes to us. We're either sending it to the state and telling us to give us money or we're sending it to the Y and saying, give us money. But either way, each organization has to supply the money to the fund.
Go ahead.
Versus it sitting there all the time.
Yeah.
If we don't see their 500,000, definitely needs counting, you know, very detailed. What you're paying for, why you're paying for.
Well, so I, I think what's coming from here and I think what they're trying to say well is, you know, the state's telling you, here's our 500,000. The Y's saying, here's our $500,000 and we don't actually hold any of it. We only draw down, when we get a $100,000 bill, we send the state a request for 50, we send the Y a request for 50.
And the money comes.
It's our fund and then goes back down. That way, they maintain their account and can earn a little extra on their money. Because the state's not going to send us their half a million. And you're, and that way you don't send us your half a million. We, we apply for what we need in the moment and then repeat.
That's exactly, that's exactly how. We just need to know.
You can function that way, I think is the question, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm, I'm just concerned because after December 31st, I'm not, no longer the auditor. So I just want everything to stay out loud.
As a term.
Yeah.
So stay it out loud so that everybody's on the same page. I don't see anything, everything, Michael's having everything down by December 31st and 24th.
However you decide you want to do this, I will make sure that those financial records are impeccably clean and everything's, we copy every invoice, every check, every accounts paid by the voucher. We put it behind, we categorize it all. It's color coded. It's, and we give an overall summary. It's gotten through countless numbers of federal monitaries as well as state board of accounts. And I'm always there on call, especially, I live here. I'm not going to leave y'all.
Why, I just need one of those copies to be on site here permanently.
Well, I.
To get on to find users.
Well, you will. Actually, that's part of this is that you end up, after this project is closed out, for five years thereafter, they have to maintain that facility as a YMCA and they have to maintain insurance on that building. And twice a year, on your behalf, I will have to submit a semi-annual, it's called a sub recipient semi-annual, that just proves that we've done that through that five year period. And I have to get their certificate of insurance each year and upload that. So you are correct.
So the lien that you file in the recorder's office, do you release that after the five years?
What lien?
You're supposed to record a lien.
I don't know.
Uh, that was, now she's right. Is that in the state agreement with us that something has to be done in the recorder's office? She's right. It's in there. I just forget where.
It, would that be like the, the affidavit lien from the contractor that that work has been completed? Or if, I mean, if there was, if there was a, if there was a loan on this property, I guess you would have to file a lien, but there's no loan either.
There's supposed to be a lien because then our group can come back.
I think it is there. So.
A lien in the amount of $500,000 if whatever happens that, that Oprah can come back and get.
No, I'm not going to let it in its own place.
Is that in the grant agreement?
I'm not really sure.
See, that's, I can't remember.
Okay, it is. Okay, so the project involves construction or redevelopment of the building. A lien in a restricted covenant must be completed.
Okay. I know what you're talking about. I got, I do have that form. It's just been a while since we had that. Yes, I have that form. There is a state template that we can use. And then we can, and so basically it will be an attachment to the sub recipient. You are totally right. I just spaced that. So, uh, the sub recipient and that lien and covenant will be attached together and they both will get recorded. And so, and then when that's done, then I submit that to the state and then they will release that.
Well, that, that's what I was thinking.
Yes, yes, you're right. You're absolutely right. I'm just, it threw me before I lived there. I was like, what is that?
But after the five years, it needs to be released because we've done it at a home rehabilitation grant.
Yeah.
And, uh, so we forgot to release them or whatever. And people go to sell the house and they can't because that lien needs to be.
Right. So yes, after the five years, when we do our last sub recipient semi-annual report, they will release that lien. Yes, that, that's right.
The real question for the commissioner is, do we want to pay all the bills directly to the contractors and deal with the bid process? Or do we want YMCA to pay all the bills and deal with the bid process? I mean, that's the conversation, really?
And Janet, you will, if, if the Y ended up paying all of the invoices, you would get, there'd be a federal cash control register for the county where it shows money in, the ETF notice, and then money out to the Y. Then, then when the Y receives that money, they in turn, there would be a copy of the deposit slip when they deposit that. And then a copy of the check that they wrote to the vendor showing money in, money out. So it, you know, with the sub, it's just taken an extra loop. But then any, during, and each month, I can give you copies of exactly that whole, all the paperwork for that month. I'll just send it, I'll scan it, send it to you. And then in the end, you will have a copy of every single invoice, every single check. So in turn, it would show for an audit purpose that if you did end up just giving it to the Y and let them pay, that everything was paid accordingly. And they would be the ones that would contract direct and, but.
My, my preference would be the bidding entity and that you're not paying everything. That would be my preference.
We can write our sub recipient agreement to show that they're responsible for all the accounting?
Yes.
And.
And that would help us.
And forwarding all documentation receipts to the county auditor. We can write that in.
And that would take care of the state board of accounts concerns that Janet has?
Probably not ideal how she likes it because I can tell she's good at her job. She like, you know, she's kind of like me. I like to be the only cook in the kitchen. And, you know, if I get money in, I want to make sure it's paid to the price person. I get that. But, um, I think it is cleaner and more simple if we would just let the money come to the county and then it goes to the Y and the Y pays all the bills that they own the building, they have the contracts with. It's just cleaner that way, I think. And each month when I order funds, I will give you all the documentation from the past month and then say, here's our new bill. And then we'll get it done and then we'll get Janet to go. Another thing is I don't anticipate that this is going to be a very lengthy process. Like I'm doing a, I'm doing a library over in Knightstown and the town in Knightstown applied on a library. I mean, that's been over a year, every month, every. This, I think we're going to probably see two draws come in and out. Because I have a feeling that this roofing contractor will probably bill 50% and then they'll complete and we'll pay them, pay them out except for the retainage. And then at the time before we, um, pay them in full, I think it would be great then if not only the Y goes through the walkthrough, but somebody from the county too. And then you, but because we are going to have the contractor have both of you as insured parties. So I do think that at the final walkthrough, you know, both parties need to be represented so that you can say, okay, yeah. And the architect would sign off and all of that. Then once everybody's happy, then we'll pay out that remaining. I'll close up all the books. I'll bring, not only are you going to get all the financials, but you're going to get the civil rights, the labor standards, the, the payroll, the, the certified payroll reports. We have to do all of that stuff. And I get that all to you. And I know you don't know me, but literally if I screw something up, it's a black eye to me. That's not how I've gotten this far. I'm not saying that I, there's not, you know, that occasionally things mess up. But if there's any type of finding, it's on me to fix that for you. And if I can't fix it, if I screw something up that bad, I lose my certification, which means I lose my livelihood. So I take this really seriously. And I will, any questions you have, I'll hold your hand. I'll make sure you're happy. Okay? I mean, I don't want you to be uneasy with it.
I'm not easy. I've just been through it enough times to.
Well, I'm better than Sarah says, so.
Do you, do, do you check on the disbarment of any of your bids?
Absolutely. We have to.
Do you have to?
Yep. We have to go through sam.gov, make sure that they are registered with Sam and they don't have any disbarment. Then I ask. Then I also have to check it through the HUD, which is another federal website, so absolutely, I do that. Uh, any contract over two hundred thousand, it's required, but I even do it for the architect and myself.
And you can put, or I don't know if you plan to, but I know you can put a completion date in that contract, so if we can make sure.
We will put a completion date in the contract, absolutely, and if they don't make it, then there will be liquidated damages, that would be approved. Unless they have filed for an extension of time and it's been approved. But, yes, there will be a start and an end. Absolutely, that is your goal, their goal, and my goal.
Yeah, I understand Janet's point completely, and there's gonna be a new sheriff in her office.
I get, I get it. It would be lovely if we could have this done in November, and so I'll put on the, I'll put the gas down so that we can maybe get it all completely administratively closed out by the end of the year, so that nobody else has to worry about it.
Well, I just do for the next five years.
Well, the next five years, yes, but the next five years, it's, it's basically two question marks, ying yang. Send it to Mark or whoever the commissioner president is, they sign it, I upload it, and that's that. That in turn though, if that doesn't get done, if you do apply for another federal grant through OKRA, they, when you're in the grant process, they tell you to do an overdue document check. And so if there are any overdue documents, you can't submit your, uh, application. And so in turn, but again, if we don't get them in, they send us a notice, oh, by the way, you're on the naughty list. I don't like being on the damn naughty list, I'm sorry. I know, that's not, that's not my style. So we will make sure that that gets done, and I'll make sure that the new auditor understands that that'll, that'll be required for five years after we close the project. So. Have we decided then that?
Mark, I think you need to study, I think Tony and I are good with us not doing the bidding, actually handing, handing all of the funds.
Yeah, I, I, I feel the same way, I, I think if we bid, it's gonna create a false sense of security that the bidders that were involved in it, we really don't, we're just.
Pass it through for the money, the Y's project's gonna.
Yeah, it really.
While we, we handle some or some, some responsibility with the State Board of Accounts, the project is not ours.
And I don't wanna risk.
We're sponsoring the project for the OKRA.
The county being, if something comes up next month, that we can qualify for OKRA and apply, and we did this for the Y, this project B is truly the county, because I don't want there being confusion.
I agree with that.
And I also think the, the less you do, the less it is on you, it's all on them, and that's, that's why the subrecipient is in place. You're kinda passing on everything to them and saying, hey, if you don't do all this, then when the state comes after us, you're coming, we're gonna expect five hundred thousand dollars back from you.
So we just, we just pass through the five hundred thousand dollars of OKRA money after questioning YMCA, and then the rest of the project is YMCA's project within what the subrecipient group, because it talks down in the subrecipient department. They'll bring the bids to us, they'll exploit that in a public meeting, we don't have to do the work, they'll let us know what it is, that they met the standards, basically. It's a, hey, here's what we did, we met the standards, this is a decision we made, and then that's OKRA.
So that brings me, so they're gonna bring the five hundred thousand, that brings me to that point, I guess that's five. They're gonna put together the plans and specifications, do you all want to review that before we take it out to bid? Or no, I mean, since they're the ones that are gonna own it, so. And then when we do take it to bid, there will be an advertisement that will say the county of Decatur on, well, I actually say the YMCA on behalf, yes, that's what. But I will make sure that I send that to all of you before we put it in the paper and kinda tell you what our advertising. The bids will be accepted at a public meeting, you're invited if you want, but you don't have to attend it. Uh, we will get a copy of the certified bid tab and a bid recommendation, I'll make sure you get copies of all of that. Then they will enter into the contract, and then that's kinda when the money will start. It's not until after we get a contractor that we're gonna start ordering funds. So, um, you just wanna be really involved in the final walkthrough, is that kinda what you're, be notified of all the steps, but then the final walkthrough, you wanna be somebody there to look at that?
I mean, I guess as the grantee, do we eventually sign off as the project completion, like we're declaring it? Or do you guys still make that declaration to the state? It will depend.
They will sign off, the, the Y will sign off on the official AIA form with the architect and the contractor. Then I would have to attach that to OKRA's form, which requires that the county say, yes, the Y has completed, we've seen it.
Then we should be at the walk.
So then you need to be at the walkthrough, that's kinda what I was thinking too.
Basically, I, I think we're both down to, at any stage, we have to sign something, we looked in at that stage. I, I mean, I think that's, the essence of all of this is that. We were signing something that's happened, we should be present to see it's happened.
Now, do you want, so, because that's been a little confusion on my part, I apologize for that. So when I have a document that needs to be signed by the commissioner president, if I just send it to him and CC every, because there's a lot of documents that don't necessarily, that are just form letters. They don't necessarily require it going to a meeting.
But the commissioner's president, he is signing for the commissioners, so it's in, in, in agreement with the entire board. So if we've never seen it, when he signs, his commissioner's president, he's signing for Jeremy and I as a board or as a body. So if we've never seen it and he's signed for it, he's signing for me.
So how do you want me to, I just wanna make sure, so if I send it to Mark right now and CC you and Chad on it, is that sufficient, and then if Chad thinks it's something that needs to go at a commissioner meeting for approval? I mean, I just don't wanna.
The downside of a three-member executive is, in order for them to sign off on something, they need to vote on it in a public meeting. So like today.
Every form letter?
Like your three letters today, we can get signed because we're in a public meeting right now, but, yes, if, if you have something else like that, you need to let us know, you know, either before the first or third Monday of the month, that you're gonna need something, because, yes, it should be presented in the public and heard and, and voted upon, that is.
Yes, and like payroll and the stuff that we do, we vote on that, and then Mark signs it and gives it to, we would all sign it. But he's signing because the board of commissioners have agreed to those things.
I get that, I mean, you know, and then things that require motions like a local match resolution and a subrecipient agreement and all of that, that's legal and binding, it's just that there's a lot of forms on this project, and a lot of them are literally, um, state, have you done this? Yes. And it, I, but I will, I mean, I just, I don't wanna inundate you in cost and inclusion.
There will just be meetings that you come in, you give us a quick update, the form we move to approve.
Okay, okay, all right.
And that's it.
All right, well, there shouldn't be much more, I'm hoping, once we get, once we get it awarded, then there'll be some things at that time, so with the bids before we award, then there'll be things, which that's legal too, I mean, legal and binding, so that would come in. But I just wanna make sure.
The easiest thing to make the meetings work is if we get the information early enough to ask questions, because I like to ask questions, so if I, if I, if I have questions, if I have questions and you give it to us the day of the meeting or the day before and I can't ask them, then I'm going to ask them during the meeting.
Well, I will do my, I will do my best, but to get them to you, I mean, is forty-eight hours sufficient for a form letter?
For a form letter, yes, if you're gonna drop something like this, they're talking weeks.
Yes, yes.
But like, I'm looking at the, the civil rights officer letter.
Yes, that's.
That's simple, but they still have to go to approve it because, you know, it says it's signed by Mark, but it's sincerely county of Decatur, which is all three of them.
All right, okay.
Yeah, it's a nineteen-page subrecipient agreement.
Well, yeah.
He's gonna review it first, amongst his other duties, and it's seven phone calls I give in the day, and then, it's not seven, exactly. Try to do it as one full.
Was the, so Chad, do you kinda have a good understanding of how they're wanting to, I mean, do you, have you drafted some stuff? Added some stuff to this?
I have lots of notes that I now need to speak with, you know, my clients about what's important, what's not important.
Okay.
And then can send you, but yeah, I mean, I have.
And I sent it to you in Word so that you can edit and do what?
I mean, I have pages of notes, now it's a matter of what's important and what's not, and how we're going to structure it back to you. So.
So you're gonna do that?
I've got a good start, I should be able, and again, it's, it's a hell of a day or week in the counties, so.
I.
It's, it's in process, your timeline says I've got roughly a couple of weeks to do this sort of, so.
And then that, so you can do, I just wanted to know if there was anything I can do to help you, but right now, it's kinda in your hands. You're gonna edit this, make sure that they're good, then get it back to us, we'll take a look, and then question what have you, we'll, we'll get it ironed out, but yes, we've got, it just has to be signed and recorded with that in prior to accepting a bid. So the sooner.
Is there anything, I don't know, as far as legal expenses incurred by the county?
There is not.
Yes.
But.
Yes, there is, it has not been, it's not been yet.
So that's.
Because that was the only thing I was.
So an administrative fee for, sure.
With the amount of review that some of this is going.
We're just gonna have to add that to all the project line items, because they do, they, I mean, having Chad do this.
We, we are incurring legal expenses.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I, on the county level, uh, where we have to have Chad review things or edit things for us, that I don't want taxpayer dollars on something where we're being, where we're being a pass through.
We've got a line item in our project budget that said advertising and miscellaneous, so we have some funds budgeted. And so basically Chad just would submit a bill to the county, and then Janet, if you just highlight what portion of it was Y, submit to us, and then we'll send you a check so that you can make that.
That again is the Y side of it, that's not going to be OKRA's side of it, as far as where that money's being paid from.
It would be the Y side of it, the local funds, yes. OKRA funds will only, you can count that as match towards your five hundred, the only thing OKRA funds will pay for is the contractor. All right, well then the subrecipient, I'm gonna let Chad kinda mess around with that and, and then get that to us when he can. And then, um, next thing.
And then that would be taken to a meeting and getting approved.
Yes, that absolutely is.
Right, that has to be, so he's gonna, he's gonna edit, get them happy, then he'll get it to us, we'll look at it. If we've got any questions, I'll work with Chad to get that, and then once everybody is okay with it, then Chad will get it presented at a meeting and passed, and then I'll pick up a copy, we'll put the lien and covenants with it, it'll be there too. I'll get you a copy of that as well, and then we'll record it, and then everybody gets a copy of the fully executed. It actually has to go to the state after we, after both parties sign, then it goes to the state, they sign it, then it comes back, and that's when we record it, okay?
And I guess, just while we're on that, considering the next meeting is only five days away, you're probably looking at the Monday, April first meeting, which is a night meeting, is when that is probably gonna have to be presented, at best case scenario.
Oh, the subrecipient?
Yeah, it's, it's not gonna be done in five days, by the time we do all that.
No, but you think that we could actually have that agreement done by the end of this month and present it for passing up first?
Isn't our next meeting the eighteen?
I had it down for the fifteenth.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's five days out, I'm not gonna be.
I had it down at the April fifteenth meeting.
Well, that would probably be much better.
It's just, it's fine, April fifteenth is fine, the middle of it, let's shoot for the middle of April to have it, that, because I, I mean.
Because having the date certain is going to probably help me, so.
I've got it down there to, county would execute April fifteenth, so you shoot for that. You should maybe have it to us by the fifth, we'll comment, get right back to you so that we can have it ready for the fifteenth, okay?
Okay, that works.
All right?
So I'm getting, us moving forward with the engineer, architect, and hiring now.
Yeah. That doesn't, that doesn't preclude, no, no, we're, that's fine.
I mean, I know there's all those to pay.
We, we probably won't have an architect hired by the end of, it'll probably be about the same time, and it, it can meld together, it's fine. We just don't wanna hire a contractor before the subrecip, because that's who's getting the money, the sub, the contractor. Um, environmental release, that is one thing, I do have to run a notice in the newspaper just stating that we did the environmental. So I'm gonna need, um, I'm gonna need for you guys to approve letting me do that. And then we've got to approve, um, going back up to FEED, that financial match up with date, and, um, the civil rights, the fair housing statement, all of that, those letters, I need to get approval on that, and then get Mark to be approved at least signing the grant agreement. And until you, I mean, you can sign the grant agreement, and if something does go afar where we don't get a subrecipient, you didn't order any money, you just void out that, so, but I, I just wanna get it signed into the state since they're looking for them right now. Um, we get our environmental release, plans and specs, bidding, we've already kinda gone through all of that. Once we bid, we get down to that release of funds stage, that's where I am gonna need signature from the county saying that we did that, and I'll provide all the documentation of the bidding procedures and a letter, and in turn, um, you could, you'll get that before the meeting, and then you can say, yeah, Shannon can file for the release. Then the, uh, Y will award the contract, we'll do the construction phase, again, we're gonna try to get it done at the end of November so we can close it out in December. And, um, then we just go through the closeout, and like I said, the subreporting, subrecipient reporting will be through twenty twenty, or through twenty thirty. So that's all I have, um, if I could just, like I said, authorize Mark to sign the grant agreement, authorize Mark to sign on my FEED's documentation, and authorize me to run the environmental notice in the paper. Those are the three things I need.
Chad, you didn't have any, any grant agreement?
No, again, that one is, sure, I can tell you, the whole bunch of stuff to change, and the state's gonna tell you, no.
Right.
So, uh, but no, it's, I have no problem with that, as I think Shannon covered it, which is, if this all falls apart in three weeks, we'll, but we're not doing anything that binds us, and now we're happening in a hole.
Yeah.
This is just, yeah, we're gonna play ball and do what we need to do, and then the other letters are all fine as well, they're very simple and straightforward, so.
I'll make a motion to approve signing the grant agreement.
Second?
I'll concur.
And then the, uh, I'll make a motion to sign the, uh, the FEEDs.
Yeah.
And then also, I'd make the same motion to run the environmental release in the paper.
I'll second that.
I'll concur.
And then we're in agreement also to have the YMCA pay all the bills and do draw invoices through us with the OKRA money and pass through, and they do, uh, basically the entire project, other than the stuff that'll be in the subrecipient agreement that we'll agree on later.
Yes, I'm in agreement with that.
I'm in too.
So would that be, let's say we got a two hundred thousand dollar bill, then you guys would give me a hundred? And if I submit you, I mean, I pay, then I pay the two hundred dollars, the two hundred thousand dollar bill.
Well, it's, it's based upon percentages, and I will pack, so some bills you're paying a hundred percent, and some bills, so the construction invoice was probably gonna be stacked up about sixty percent OKRA funds and forty percent yours. So each invoice, I would order sixty percent from OKRA, and then you would put in. And then you would put in, and then once you get that check, then you'll put in your 40% and pay.
Because your local match is going to be things that OCPRA doesn't come out of. So once you go from 500,000 to 500,000, but you take your local match out for per services, chat services.
That's right.
Those services, now your 500 is 535, whatever, and then it'll match up.
Each, each item's on a line item and some are 100% you. And then the contractor will be probably about a 60, 40.
And almost left after she's done with 100 of hers.
Yeah, I'll help you, that's why I do that. And I, okay, believe me, believe me, like Janet, I don't like anybody else doing it. I have post-it notes on everything, do this, 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 boom, 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 okay?
Anything else we need to do today?
No.
Mr. Chan?
Today.
All right, well, thank you so much.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Recede.
Recede?
Second.
Oh, you're recessing again. I'm glad you chose not to do this at evening because I thought at nine o'clock at night, this would be a lot to consume. Okay, so, thank you, thank you. Oh, okay. The grant that you did far away. Grant agreement came to you in an email. And you have to sign it via DocuSign. So when you open that email, there's.